I call the order this regular meeting of the City of Campbell, City Council on this Tuesday, May 5th, 2020. This regular city council meeting is conducted via telecommunications and is compliant with the provisions of the Brown Act and Executive Order N-2920 issued by the Governor. The city council meeting is being livestreamed on Channel 28, the city's website and YouTube. Members of the public will not be able to attend meetings at the Campbell City Council chambers physically, however, public comment will be accepted via email at clerksoffice, C-L-E-R-K-S-O-F-F-I-C-E, at campbellca.gov during this meeting and before the close of public comments on an item. Please note, the city cannot guarantee that any email sent during the meeting will be received by the close of the public comment. If you choose to email your comments during the meeting, please indicate in the subject line for "public comment" and that item number that it will be on the agenda as you wish to comment on. Comments will be read during the comment period for the item and will be subject to the two-minute term limit, time limitation, I'm sorry. If you would like to submit an oral request or if there is any item on the consent calendar that you wish to comment on, please send an email to allow time for the city clerk to receive that item. All right, roll call, please, city clerk.
Councilmember Waterman?
Here.
Councilmember Bybee?
Present.
Councilmember Resnikov?
Here.
Vice Mayor Gibbons?
Here.
Mayor Landry?
Present. At this point, we're going to do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. There, I see no special presentations or proclamations. And, city clerk, I have see, I see no communications or petitions? Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, next item on the agenda is oral requests. This is the portion of the meeting reserved for people wishing to address the city council on any man or not on the agenda. If the law generally prohibits the council from discussing or taking action, however, council may instruct staff accordingly representing, or gosh darn, I'm sorry, regarding the oral requests. Is there any public comments received?
We have not received any public comments.
All right, now I'm on to the mayor's announcements. I think we have some slides. Okay, there we go. The City of Campbell continues to work closely with our partnering agencies to monitor how the coronavirus is impacting our communities. We are actively monitoring the information provided by the U.S. Centers for Disease Control and reviewing guidance provided by the county's Public Health Department. We continue to take proactive steps to prioritize the health and safety of our employees and community members. Our focus is to maintain essential services and keep you informed. If you need assistance finding food, paying household bills, seeking available resources or any other essential services, please visit 211.org or call on your phone 211. 211 is completely confidential and is accessible 24 hours a day, seven days a week. California is expanding Friendship Line California to support lonely and isolated elder Californias across the state. Friendship Line California is a toll-free and is available to provide emotional support to older Californians facing loneliness, isolation and anxiety. Friendship Line California is 1-888-670-1360. CalFresh applications are being accepted over the phone for residents who need help buying food. Contact the Second Harvest Food Bank connection hotline at 800-984-3663. EDD is working to streamline the benefits approval process. The California Environment, I'm sorry, the California Employment Development Department is streamlining the approval of benefits by suspending the need for applicants to certify their eligibility. Beneficiaries with certification dates per week sending March 14th through May 9th do need, do not need to certify their benefit payments. EDD will automatically certify eligibility on your behalf. For more information, visit edd.ca.gov/unemployment/certify.html. The Santa Clara Office of Education has posted resources for parents, including at-home learning resources by grade level, guides for talking to children about COVID-19 and accessibility tools for students with special needs. They are also included in their weekly resource chat forum where parents can learn and practice education techniques for an inclusional training specialist, exchange information and connect to each other. For more information, please visit sccoe.org. The Santa Clara County Library District has resources for students and families while distant learning. There are many online resources for students, including homework help, tutoring, test preparation, resource tools, not to mention academic videos, articles, ebooks and so much more. Please visit their website at sccld.org. The Open Space Authority and its partners are bringing you a full calendar of virtual livestreamed outdoor events and programs to keep you connected to nature during these unprecedented times. Join them for tours of parks, preserves and urban spaces, mental wellness activities, outdoor art lessons, live animal presentations, native plant walks and more. Please visit their website at openspaceauthority.org. We have created an email for you if you would like to share the photos of you and your family wearing face masks. Please send your photos to facecoverings@campbellca.gov. Please visit and continue to visit, oh, I'm sorry, one more, the Campbell Ministerial Association is at campbellministerialassociation@gmail.com. If you have any needs, please reach out to them. Please continue to visit the city's website at campbellca.gov for up-to-date information on COVID-19, adjusted city services, canceled events, police department services, the Campbell Community Center and other business resources. Thank you, and that concludes the mayor's communication. Next on the agenda is the consent calendar. Is there anyone who would like to pull an item from consent? I see Paul Resnikov raising his hand.
Yeah, I'll pull items four and five.
Okay. Is there anybody else that wants to pull an item off the agenda? Seeing none. Do I have a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, has the deputy city clerk received any comments on the item of this consent calendar?
We have not, I just want to note the desk item for item five.
Yes, the clarification of the date? The end date, right?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a motion for items one through three?
I'll move consent, one through three.
Okay. Second, and we have to do a roll call vote?
Yes, please. I'm sorry, I didn't hear who seconded that.
Liz, Paul and Liz.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Waterman?
Aye.
Councilmember Bybee?
Aye.
Councilmember Resnikov?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gibbons?
Aye.
Mayor Landry?
Aye. Now we'll go to item number four, declaring the week of May 17th to 23rd of 2020 National Public Works Week. Paul?
Thank you very much, so, I pulled this, I do it annually, this is what I call the Be Nice to Todd Night in a way.
Sorry.
But real, in reality, this year even bigger because we have the public works people out there doing streets and maintenance of facilities and traffic lights and traffic other problems, and in the worst part of, of the sheltering and all the problems, they're still out there working, I see them working every day, and I think they should get credit for that. So to Director Capurso, thank you and thank your people, at least on my behalf, because they never stopped working and they never stopped maintaining things. It's a very difficult time now, and I saw really no noticeable drop off in, in output, which is really good, so they were really doing their jobs, I know, on, with a lot fewer people to do it. So thank you.
Thank you, Paul, and I would just like to extend a thank you to Todd Capurso and his entire group in Public Works. I agree that they've been stepping up to the plate during these times. I have not seen any reduction in services and I think they've been doing a great job. Liz?
Here.
Okay, Rich?
You're here.
Okay, so, do we have a motion on four?
I'll move that the council adopt a resolution declaring the week of May 17th through 23rd, 2020, as National Public Works Week.
Second, anybody?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Anne, Anne or Liz?
Anne's fine.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Waterman?
Aye.
Councilmember Bybee?
Aye.
Councilmember Resnikov?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gibbons?
Aye.
Mayor Landry?
Aye. Next is item five, which is an extension of the declaration of a local emergency due to COVID-19, and this would include the desk item which clarifies the end date of the 60-day period. Paul?
Yes, so the reason I pulled this one was just to make a comment, it references repeatedly the Director of Emergency Services, but it wasn't clear when I first read it, so everybody knows, that is the city manager who we, we voted as that position to be in charge of that. So I wanted to make that clear that it's the city manager that's been keeping everything running during this time, that he's been doing a great job of it, and, you know, look full faith to have him continue forward with this, and hopefully, we just get out of his way and let him do what he's doing, because between city manager and staff, a lot of work is getting done with very few resources, so thank you.
Thank you. Rich?
Okay, I very, very strongly second that.
Okay, we haven't had a motion yet, Rich.
I wasn't seconding the motion, I was seconding what he said.
Oh, okay, all right, Liz.
All right, I'll make a comment after.
After what, making a motion?
If they want to make a motion, I'll make a comment on the motion.
I'm just going to make a comment that even though the county right now is giving the end date of May, right, yeah, that this extends past that, that the main reason we're doing this is to be able to qualify for emergency funding operations and to keep us moving forward in the direction we've been right now. Any other comments? Liz?
I was just, I was just going to say that I think staff has been working hard through all this difficult time, but I think one of the important things is that the city maintain its transparency and continue to have staff and council do the work that we need to do to move the city forward. So I look forward to getting back to regular agendas and having staff work with council to have transparency in all the issues that the community wants to see and discuss publicly.
And just remind everybody that we have a COVID-19 page that we're trying to keep current. If the county issues a new order, if we do anything, I checked this morning and it's up to date, so I'll take a motion now.
I'll move, item five is recommended with the notation to add in the desk item showing July 15th as a date.
I'll second.
Rich, second that? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Waterman?
Aye.
Councilmember Bybee?
Aye.
Councilmember Resnikov?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gibbons?
Aye.
Mayor Landry?
Aye, that motion passes. We have no public hearings or instructions of ordinance, introduction of ordinance, we're now moving on to new business. Item six, consider the adoption of a resolution to author, sorry, authorize the city manager to execute a professional service agreement with House Keys Incorporated. If there are anybody who wishes to comment on this item, please submit your comments to cities, or sorry, clerksoffice@campbellca.gov, and we will be able to read them during the public comment period. We have two presenters, or maybe more, we have Stephen Rose, we'll start, our senior planner.
Good evening, Mayor Landry, members of the city council, hopefully you guys can hear me. Item six on the agenda is to consider authorizing the city manager to execute a 12-month service agreement with House Keys.
Nope, we lost you, Steve.
Are you going to share my screen here?
Oh, there you go.
Give me one more second. There we go. So House Keys was initiated, was initially hired in 2016 to serve as the city's BMR administrator. The contract has been renewed annually since that time, with the current contract set to expire June 31st. As the city's BMR administrator, House Keys manages the city's below-market rate rental, ownership and loan programs. The House Keys contract is paid from a successor agency fund created after the dissolution of the city's RDA, or redevelopment agency, which has restrictions on its use. The fund has adequate reserves to cover the contract as well as the requested increase discussed on the next slide. The cash in the fund is projected to be depleted by 2028, assuming a 2.5% annual increase in future contracts and no loan payoffs. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to consider the renewal of the contract, which includes a $25,000 increase in the flat rate fee charged to the city. No other changes to the fees, such as the transaction or application fees, which are generally paid by participants in the program, are proposed at this time. Based on prior discussions with House Keys, the requested increase is intended to catch up with administrative costs since 2016, including the cost of living increases for staff and in order to maintain parity with other cities they serve. The increase is also intended to compensate for service improvements and new hires at the company, which have benefited the city by providing enhanced services, such as assistance in Spanish. Julius Nanda, as you mentioned earlier, he's not exactly another presenter, but he is the CEO and program manager of House Keys, and will also be available for questions on the request after my presentation, and I'm sure will be happy to elaborate on any of these points that I've raised. After considering the reasons provided by House Keys, the city council should provide general direction to staff to either accept the increase as proposed or to continue to work with House Keys on terms. As an overview of the homeowner program, there are 87 units in the program spread across 17 developments. Of these units, 56 are certified, 23 are not certified, which generally means that they have not been responsive to information requests by House Keys, and eight units fall outside the program as they are either managed by Habitat for Humanity or have previously fulfilled their obligations with the city. At this time, House Keys has postponed enforcement on the 23 non-responsive homeowner units, pending direction from the council, and further progress on the one active case that the city has pursued legally. The next batch of certification requests is certified, is scheduled for July, having postponed a prior certification transmittal in April in response to COVID-19. The rental program, by comparison, has 51 units which are spread across five developments. In the rental program, there are 48 certified units, two denied units and one vacant unit. Again, in response to COVID-19, House Keys would like to suspend certifications as well as the one pending eviction until the end of the year, or minimally until the shelter in place orders have been lifted, and has directed landlords of the two denied units to maintain month-to-month leases with the tenants for the time being. Understanding that the two units have been denied, including the one, the one unit which is pending eviction, are not due to a lack of payment, which is the focus of the county's eviction moratorium. Another question to the council on enforcement is whether or not House Keys should pursue these rental units while the shelter and, while the shelter in place order remains in effect. In conclusion, staff is recommending the city council adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a 12-month service contract with House Keys. This concludes staff's presentation, thank you.
All right, do we have any questions from the council? Rich? And then Liz?
We're going to, sorry to interrupt, are we going to hear from Julius?
He's available to answer questions, I don't know that he's making a presentation.
Okay.
Steve, is he making a presentation? Hi Julius. You're on mute, Julius.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, you can, I can hear you now.
All right, perfect. Hello, everyone?
Nice to see you again. I think at this point, Liz, the presentation, yep, and then Rich, were you having your hand up?
Yeah, I guess, I mean, I'm, I'm a little confused on the presentation, so it sounds like, and those of us who rent out our units have the same experience, that we're saying that there's no use pursuing anything, it sounds, you're, Daniel, I'm sorry, you were saying that we may have to wait till December to start doing anything legal, is that what I'm hearing from this?
Well, there's two aspects of it, one is, is that if we do any certifications now, one, it's difficult to get people to exchange paperwork due to COVID, because there's social distancing issues with people getting paperwork into House Keys, and then for our existing cases where we found the people to be out of compliance with the program, we are holding off, we've instructed the landlords to hold off on any unlawful detain or evictions until we get further direction regarding the moratorium.
I guess, you're, there's common wisdom out there that's going to be a good, at least six months, seven months from now before we can even think about it?
Yes.
Again, I heard, I heard seven months ago. Okay, that's interesting, thank you.
Any other questions? Liz? You're on mute, Liz.
I was waiting my turn, no one else?
No, I don't see any other hands up.
Okay. Hi Julius, I actually have quite a few questions. Every time you come before us, we learn, and I am, can you help me understand the time, to begin with the timeframe? You keep using 2019. Can you explain to me what the, is it the calendar year, is it our fiscal year, what does the, what's the boundary when you use your statistics for 2019?
You're on mute. Julius, we can't hear you. I think you're still on mute.
Try your volume.
Julius? Go ahead, but we can't hear you.
Well, while we're awaiting a response from Julius, maybe for him to get his audio fixed, I can comment in brief.
Sure.
The information which is provided in the report, which is the certifications and the annual, it's, it is kind of based on an annual basis, it is based on the best information which is available at the time that the, that the report is prepared, so you do some, kind of see some overlap with 2020 and some insights, such as you do see that one of the units which was vacant has subsequently been filled in 2020. Kind of the problem with these, with these reports is that their contract period runs from June 30th till June 30th, but in order for us to prepare the report, we need to rely on the best information which is available, which doesn't run all the way through the end of the contract.
Okay, so I may make some suggestions in the contract language to help us with this. The reason I'm asking is, and I did, I actually went back and tried to find the staff report from a year ago, which was in fact July 2nd, but like tonight, although the staff report was much comprehensive than last time, it was a detailed slideshow last time, and it's not attached to the minutes, so I couldn't look up the comparable data. Julius, what I'm concerned about is, I can't tell. My, my memory tells me that you've had these 23 units outs, homeownership units, these 23 have been outstanding since you first came on board in 2017, and I was trying to see a track record of where we've made progress, because I, I don't see it. Can you help me see where you've actually moved forward? As far as I know, it's only one homeowner unit in the last three years that have been challenged, and we've got 23 out there, so I, I'm missing progress. No, no, no voice.
No, Julius, we still can't hear you. Is there a mute button that you didn't turn off?
Brian?
Yeah, now we can hear you.
Okay, good, so, wow, sorry about that. So, um, so yeah, so, so the timeline is, is based on what we've done annually, so the ownership program is, is very unique, because when we started doing and completed all those certifications at the end of 2017, that was the same time that we came back to council in November of the next year to put enforcement guidelines in place. So in November 2018, we said, okay, now we've got enforcement guidelines. So beyond those enforcement guidelines in November 18, we pursued our first legal case and then came back to council about that first legal case, and said, because ownership is so unique in terms of how you go about pursuing enforcement, the legal aspects and the cost, right, because these cases can get expensive, we said, we're going to track this case that we're starting in basically 2019 and, and not pursue any actions against the other owners, because unless you're going to go to court, you really can't start the process, it's not like an eviction, you have to be willing to go to state court.
So, I will tell you, I vaguely remember, I certainly remember the discussion about the one, I vaguely remember the discussion about not going forward with the others because of the cost, but at this point, we know, I believe we know from your survey in 2017, that a good number of those 20, 23, probably the 12 that aren't responding, do not live at the residences, they have out-of-town addresses. And that is so defeating, the, when we are so desperate for affordable housing, to have people renting out, which is what we suspect, we don't know factually, but having people renting out their affordable housing and making money on it, which is what the one person clearly did, it bothers me that it's dragging on, so this may not be the right meeting to discuss it, but I'm, I am concerned that we are not doing right by our community with these units.
It's a, it's a valid concern, I think one of the ways that we can deal with it going forward is set, if we do want to pursue all cases, we can set a, call it a first tranche budget for all 12 cases and pursue all 12 in court, and just know that, you know, we might have to, it might lead to a snowball effect in terms of costs, so, but we can, we can at least have a, maybe another session to discuss just the, the legal implications of that, and we could bring our attorneys in to, to help discuss that as well.
I mean, it's up to the council, but I certainly would support having a follow-up discussion, because that's a lot of units to have out, which we clear, I, I believe we clearly know that there's 23 units that aren't certified, and 12 have been flagged, so, that's, I mean, that's nearly 50% of our units, you know, it's what, 40% of our units, so, I think it's significant and serious enough that we now, I think we need to be proactive.
One, one point I'd like to make is, one of the things that we did in one of our other jurisdictions is that we went to council and approved a revolving fund in another city by that council that set aside funds to pursue units legally, and the city manager was able to sign off on the, the use of those funds, and we had a report specifically for that, so that each pursuing case didn't have to come back to council, and we had sort of a, a means by which to pursue these cases. That might be an option here, obviously the facility might be smaller in Campbell, but I think it might be worth discussion, and maybe, maybe a session to discuss it, but that's one of the, one of the avenues that we use to be able to have a little bit more latitude in terms of pursuing cases.
Yeah.
Okay.
I would be in support of having an additional conversation with council on that. And the second is, in terms of contract terms, I think- I think it would be helpful if, when you came back with these staff reports you've been doing, or to some extent, you've been doing quarterly updates. I think having those quarterly updates attached to the staff report will make it easier for us to track what's actually been happening, particularly because it's, we don't know what what your data is, we don't know what it reflects. And what I'm hearing now is, is it from July of 2019 through March of 2020? I can't, so I can't tell.
Okay.
We need clarity on what the reporting actually is showing.
Okay.
And then.
Can I take one quick break, Liz? I forgot to ask the deputy city clerk if we've received any comments on this item.
We're still into questions, so you're okay.
Oh, okay.
You're okay. So I'm just going through my notes and my questions here.
While you're looking, Paul, did you, did I see you raise your hand?
Yes.
Okay, when, I think Liz has one more, and then your next, Paul.
I have a couple more. It says here in the report that House Keys continues to monitor the one homeowner case that the city has pursued. And court date is scheduled in July. I think it says that guidelines pending further progress be made on the one active homeowner case and council direction. Are you asking in this staff report for additional direction on that, or are you okay? I wasn't quite clear.
Steven?
Yeah, so the particular comment here is, as you know, we have these 23 other homeowner units that we have in pursuit. And as you know, that does, that can be perceived as causing a disservice to our community. So we want to know, should we be doing more? Should we be evaluating the first tranche effort? Should we be creating a resolving fund? Should we be doing something like that?
Okay, so it it ties into the other question. I just wasn't on on what the question was. So it'll depend on what the rest of council wants to do. One of the statistics that was in, added into the contract is you wanted to add classes in Spanish. And I'm curious what the demand for Spanish has been and what your, I'm going to say, failure rate, or the number of people have taken your class who have not succeeded in getting on your very, very large waiting list.
Well, we can definitely come back with statistics specifically. I think our our main concern is as we move content online, like we're doing here, we didn't want to provide just one language because there's a double-digit percentage of Campbell residents that speak Spanish. And that's the largest group in Campbell, so we figured we would produce content in Spanish as well.
Okay, that that answers my question. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, that's, that was the last one.
Paul?
Thank you. Steven? Can you explain what this special fund is that this is paid out of and what that is, what it can be used for, and what it can't be used for?
Yeah, there's a, there's a tiny footnote in the report which speaks to that, but it says, it's a, it's a fund that was created after the, again, the dissolution of the redevelopment agency. There are very finite uses, has restrictions on its use. I go on to, it pretty much says that the fund may be used for monitoring and preserving affordable covenants, administrative costs, and homeless prevention. So it's not just a general fund for the city. It's a very limited-use fund. And the contract that we have with House Keys matches up with that. So the services that House Keys provides are eligible activities for use of the fund.
Okay, so I see, I see. Thank you, by the way. See, that was a nice way to tell me footnote nine existed. Little, it's a little beneath my ability to read it in most cases. It's so tiny, but thank you. I see it now. Hope you appreciate it.
Okay, Anne, do you have any questions? Rich? No. Now we can ask the deputy city clerk, have you received any comments on item six?
We have not received any comments.
Okay, I'll bring it back to council for discussion. Anne, I'll, do you want to, I'll start with Anne. Do you have anything you want to add?
I don't have any comments at this, at this.
Okay.
I have no, no comment at this point.
Okay, Rich?
You know, I, it just points overall to this issue of, you know, use, I I don't think it's Husky's fault. It's just a very, very difficult endeavor, whether you're talking about doing what Husky's doing, or some cities are trying to control, you know, do some kind of weird rent control. All these things always wind up in the same spot, which is something hard to manage and very low percentage success rate. So I would be cautionary of putting too much funds, whatever we can control. I know it's coming out of one one pot that is not part of the general fund, but I'd like to hear other people's views on all of that. Thank you.
Paul?
Yeah. Yeah, I've always been very supportive of of House Keys and dysfunction. So, but but Councilman Waterman's words are well spoken. I I don't know what the alternative is for the function if we didn't look at outside source. It probably would cost similar. And I am happier that the funding is coming from the special fund and not the general fund. That being said, I'd like to hear comments from the others on the request for a fee increase. I mean, we're, sadly, we're sitting here looking at massive budget shortages of millions of dollars that that we have to address. And I'm hesitant to increase costs for existing services, to be honest. Although I I I do like having the service, I'd like to get some other feedback on the the request for an increase of 18%.
Okay, Liz? You're on mute. There we go.
Yep. Okay, so thank you. I also appreciate the services of House Keys. I will say that I have somewhat the same concerns as council member Resnikov. Because I can't see the progress, I only see the work on the housing on one unit, and it hasn't progressed much. And we haven't been bringing too too many units online. I'm I'm not sure I have comfort feeling of what we've achieved this last year to justify moving forward. I see your list of items that you say you're going to do. But I don't know, I I'm, I I have some of the same concerns as council member Resnikov. I'm, I also, I just wanted to make, make note, and Steven, you remember, you were kind enough to have to do all of this housing element for middle. It's huge spreadsheet.
I do recall. That was very fun.
Even at the scale, I can barely read. There's a lot of information here that I'm wondering if you have shared with House Keys. I realize one of the things that's important for us to note is there's another footnote that talks about all the housing, affordable housing units that a house keys isn't responsible for. So we've had an issue with Silicon Valley at Home publishing an article in the newspapers doing press releases where Campbell came in a dismal 13 out of 15 cities for affordable units. And I think that it might have been based just on Julius' Husky's notes, not on the whole picture. And I think we, council really needs to understand so that we can communicate to the powers that be that Campbell is in fact very aggressive, very supportive of affordable units. So it's one of the reasons I was supportive of House Keys in the very beginning. Because we are going to be getting more and more pressure from every single unit being, project being built to make them, a portion of them affordable or whole projects affordable. We've got the infamous SB 35 that could come to us. So the expertise that House Keys brings to managing our portfolio is, I think, very, very important. And I want to support the staff that they need to do that. But I think, I think the city itself needs to have a comprehensive evaluation, like your spreadsheet, and make sure that your information and and Husky's information matches. And then I'll I'll listen to what others have to say about the requested fee increase. I will say that House Keys made a commitment early on to not raise their fees. They have honored that. So that's tempering my thought process as well.
Okay, I'll go back through the council members before I make comments. Does anybody else have comments? Seen none. Anne? Go ahead, Anne.
Yeah, yeah. I I do support the House Keys contract and the services provide. But, but I am concerned, and I realize that it is a separate, I am concerned about the the increase of the the contract price increase, given our current situation and the fact that, you know, we're going to be asking our employees to make concessions, and we're cutting back where we we may not necessarily want to, but we're going to probably be forced to. And I I'd be more inclined to renew the contract as status quo and and reevaluate it in the six months period of time when we we have a better handle on our economic situation. Or possibly reduce the scope of services that they're recommending in 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 2020 and and not implement those, which to me would seem that we would have some flexibility in negotiating a status quo contract. So that's where I am at the moment.
Julius, do you have a response?
Yes, I just wanted to say, when we started to talk about the increase, this was February, before the COVID virus hit. And our reality is also the same, as has been mentioned, as far as sentiments wise, it's definitely something we're concerned about. We don't want to pressure the city to, given the circumstances, increase fees. So don't, I don't want to conflate the two issues because one started in February where we communicated the cost increase. But since then, obviously, the world has changed in a substantial way.
I saw Rich's hand up.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think Anne said it very eloquently, and I do agree with her overall. That we've got to watch it, whether it's keeping the status quo or slightly more. This is not the time. I I know we're having meetings today lots about, you know, giving everybody breaks here and there and there, but at some point, we've got to face the music of what we're going to hit now. Thank you.
Okay, I'll I'll make some comments. I did some math per how many units they're actually managing and how much per unit they're actually ended up getting, and it's in the hundreds of dollars per unit over each month. I thought that was interesting. I am very concerned about the 23 units that have not been certified. And I can't help but think that people might be renting them out. And that's not the purpose of this program. This is to provide lower affordable housing. And if we got a long waiting list of people, it's not very fair to have 23 of this pool of what, 50 that are not responsive. I don't want to wait till the end of the year. I would say when this whole shutdown ends, that within a month or two, that maybe you can come back and and give us a report. But I would like to get those 23 houses either certified or do what we need to in the process. And then knowing that, then how much more time is that going to take in the year for them to pursue these 23 units? So I'm I I'm concerned about our budget. I I I know that we are looking at millions of dollars in a loss, and I appreciate Julius, what you said about that you had asked for this in February. And now you're reconsidering, but when I looked at how much per unit each one time-wise, it doesn't seem like a whole lot. And so right now, your request is for an additional $20,000 a year? Is that correct?
Twenty-five, twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. Would anyone consider the, maybe some, half of that or come back in two to three months to, for the request again? Any comments, Liz?
I I thought council member Bobby expressed it well. I think I'm I'm very comfortable with their services. I would like to see a statistical track record of what they've achieved. And I'm amenable to having them come back in six months. And if, depending on what things look like, we could reconsider either increasing it or reducing their scope, if that's what we need to do. But I also would hope within the timeframe that, since the last time we met was in November of 18, to discuss how to move forward with these problematic loans, that we should have a follow-up meeting at the convenience of council to figure out what the right next steps are, even if it's, it's simply setting up. What we want to do is soon as things open up, not take action immediately, but to be prepared to take action. So I think it would, it certainly, from November of 18 to November of 20, it's it's time to revisit that issue. So I would be supportive of making a motion to authorize the city manager to execute a contract extension without the increase, but with the opportunity to come back in six months to reconsider.
Rich, are you raising your hand?
Yes. Rich? I guess we could, if that was a motion, someone could second, but I'll comment anyway. I think by definition, from my question before, the the scope has been reduced. It sounds like no matter what we do optimistically between now and December, nothing will happen. The courts will not take any stand. So we we don't need to, you know, spend a whole lot of energy trying to find out that somebody's doing something wrong on their lease. We can't get, we can't get them out. We can't get a judge to make an order or for the sheriff to come or anything like that. I mean, again, all of us are facing that on rentals, et cetera, et cetera. I just don't see anything happening. So the scope will by definition go down, at least for six months, and I think we all have a feeling it will be longer than that. It may last quite a bit after the pandemic's done because people are still going to be in dire straits as far as, you know, unemployment and things like that. So the tendency to say, let's, let's continue, it's going to be long. So we might be looking a lot longer. But in the next six months, it sounds like we're definitely saying the the scope of work is is lower. Thank you.
Paul?
Yeah, so a couple of comments. I thank you, Julius, because I think you framed that request in the right, in the right way. I mean, it's it's fair. It's fair when you made it versus today to recognize what's going on. I don't foresee in six months that the financial situation is going to be very different. Even if we're coming out of things, it's still going to be a bad time. Yes, I'm not against coming back in six months with maybe the 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 intent being to review the program and what's happened, and part of that can be, I guess, fees. But the, but to bring it back as it was motion, specifically to look at fees, I don't think is the right thing to do. And I am worried too, when we do that, I mean, from what you're carefully asked for, we're going to be reviewing the whole program. And then the second piece is, if we're coming out of this and all of a sudden we're very busy, staff is going to be overwhelmed at that point, after months of doing, of of having no, no issues before us. So I I worry a little about, a little bit about burdening staff in six months, but I certainly, if we do that, I'd like to say we're bringing it back for review of the program versus agendizing a discussion of fees. Part of that, but it shouldn't be the main thing.
And and I would like to, I want to find out a little more about these 23 houses. And the comment was made earlier that the mailings are to people out of state. That concerns me quite a lot. So I'll go with the pleasure of the council, but I I feel like we should be doing something about those 23 units. Liz?
I would just offer that part of the contract is these quarterly updates. The next quarterly update would be October 30th of 2020. And then the one following that is January 31st, 2021. So those are already part of the contract scope. So we can track those, the status of the program at those two milestones, which are already contractual. And maybe in October, we can make a decision on what we want to do or see in January. But at least we will have this, the reports to build some decision-making track record on.
Okay, unless there's other comments, I'll take a motion.
I would move, yeah. I would move that the city, the city council authorized the city manager to, scrolling, renew. uh, renew, uh, execute a twelve-month uh, addition to the professional service agreement with House Keys without the additional funding.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Waterman?
Aye.
Councilmember Bobby? Aye. Councilmember Resnikov?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gibbons?
Aye. Mayor Landry?
Aye. That motion passes with the no increase, but the twelve-month contract. All right, at this point, we have council committee reports. Um, I'll start with Rich.
Um, let's see, we, what we had was the uh, library JPA committee. Um, there, I, there wasn't a lot there per se, just, you know, they're looking at budget. And still the issue, there's, since there's three, three new city halls, uh, Cupertino's putting in a new building, uh, including ours. And how that's gonna work, there's a lot of focus on that, as we talked about previously. Budgets right now are not as much in the library we, as one would think because they get a lion's share of their revenue. They're through the county and they get it through property tax, which at, up to this point is not the case. Thank you.
Anne?
Thank you. I uh, didn't attend any assigned committee uh, meetings. Uh, but I just wanted to thank city staff for their efforts in providing the essential services to our city and our residents during this, this time. Their, their efforts are really appreciated. And I also want to thank our residents for honoring the shelter-in-place protocol and um, continue to do so. I know it's difficult when you see so many people out and about and starting to come alive. But we, we still need to, to honor the, the protocol so that we can um, eventually open up and, and be safe and be healthy. Thank you.
Paul? Thank you.
Uh, yeah, no, no meetings. Actually, it's this week that um, we meet again for the solid, the um, solid waste and clean water JPA. So that'll actually be on Thursday. But no, actually, no meetings the rest of the week.
Liz?
Thank you. Um, so um, uh, I appreciate council member, uh, Bobby's statements. And I wholeheartedly support uh, the thank you to the staff and to our community. I mean, this, I, I have been very impressed, um, and more than that, about the commitment of people to help themselves and everyone else stay healthy and the support of the businesses uh, that make Campbell part of what Campbell is Campbell. And I, the support has been great. And the Chamber of Commerce, I think, has done an exceptional job doing uh, Campbell Cares. And they're coming out with a new program, which you're gonna see around the city starting on Friday, which is going to be the um, orange ribbons. And I'll let you uh, learn more about that as it um, comes about. So um, lots of really important and wonderful things helping Campbell um, stay Campbell. So thanks to all.
Are you done? Okay. Oh, sorry, my mom's phone's ringing. Let her stop it from ringing. Um, okay, so um, we've been participating, most of us, uh, every other day on the county phone calls from, with Dr. Cody. Hang on, I'm sorry, guys here. Okay. Mom? Hang on, mom, please. Sorry, you guys. I'm trying, my mom, stop, sorry. Um, we, I think most of us have been uh, on the telecon calls with the county, with Dr. Cody and other members of the county. Um, I think she's doing a great job. Uh, we do have a couple of weeks left right now, it may or may not be extended. I think it's great what um, council member Bobby and um, everybody else has said about our Campbell community. Uh, people are doing a great job. Uh, we aren't getting a lot of violations, um, from what I've been hearing. People are adhering to everything. Last Thursday, we had our emergency meeting uh, to help clarify what essential businesses could be selling uh, in a hope to help our community have access to better growth, uh, more convenient groceries. Um, also, last week, I was one of fifteen mayors that signed a letter to the county uh, discussing testing, the lack of uh, testing facilities in the county, um, the contact tracing. We did have a phone call on Friday with Cindy Chavez and Joe Semidion with the county, uh, with every fifteen mayors on the call, um, expressing our concerns. Several cities did offer their staff that's on full-time pay, but not necessarily working, that if you needed help with the contract tracing, testing, we found out you can't do the testing because you have to be a nurse uh, or a certified um, medical assistant. But um, we, the county was trying to be responsive. We've asked for data of where these testing facilities are, how many people are getting tested. And what we are not receiving online on their dashboard is how many people are actually tested positive of the number of tests. Um, I want to just let everybody know that this Saturday, our Assemblyman Evan Low and our Congresswoman Anna Eshu is holding a town on, at eleven o'clock on Sa- Saturday. Uh, so if you need more information, go to uh, either Evan's office or Anna Eshu's office. But it will be on Facebook on Saturday. And I think that's it. Uh, if there's no other, I, I see Liz's hand up.
Um, I was just gonna comment that the big challenge is um, for Santa Clara County is we have been um, holding a very tight line that the um, uh, public health director, uh, Dr. Cody has been holding a very tight line. And the governor announced some changes on Monday that would become effective with guidelines on Thursday. We're not sure what the county is going to do. So I just suggest that people pay attention because the more stringent the rules apply. And so we'll have to see what Santa Clara County uh, does in that regard. And then I have one uh, request to, uh, for a motion um, to add to the agenda.
Okay, and I would also, one thing that did come out last week was that the county did open up construction. There's small-scale or large-scale projects, you still have to maintain uh, the rules about social distancing. But we have now opened up the county for construction. And they also have allowed um, outdoor gardening. And for instance, like Summer Winds Nursery, they are allowed to open now. Uh, so those are changes that have occurred in the past week.
And you can mow your lawn, and you can have your lawn mowed.
So Liz, what is the question now?
Well, I realize that this is a difficult uh, issue and several council members may end up having to recuse. But I, I wanted to bring it to the council's attention and see if there was any support. Um, we do have residents who have requested uh, council support to um, do what San Jose has done, which is initiate a moratorium on rent increases. Um, and I think that the, it's a, oh, an important topic for the council to discuss. And I would ask for support to have that put on the council's agenda.
Do I have a, a second? That's a motion that you're making?
Uh, I don't know what the right phrasing is, but I would, yeah, I would make a motion, we add it to the council agenda.
Do we have a second on the motion? I, I don't see a second uh, for the motion. And it is very controversial, I understand both sides.
But that's no reason, that's no reason not to have a discussion.
No, it's a reason, I mean, we, we need, we were talking before, you know, staff, you know, starting to move back to doing their job. We, we've got to start moving to do our job, which is policy. And uh, getting into the weeds of what this would mean um, is going to be a complicated discussion, to say the least. There are some people saying they want it. There is a million people, I could give you, that are saying the opposite. And uh, I just don't see it, again, it's not moving the policy discussion any further forward. We would, you know, you can't get into it here, but it's, it's one of the most complicated discussions there is. Thank you.
And I would agree with that, how complex the issue is. All right, if nobody has any more comments, I'll take the, uh, close out the meeting. Thank you. And uh, we'll be, uh, our next meeting is May nineteenth. And I've been telling my friends, live from Campbell, it's Tuesday night. Please check in on May nineteenth. Thank you, everybody.
Stay safe, everyone.